We're recording now.
All right. Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Jeanne Knite, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and just being recorded. There will be no public, well, this is public access, the recording and the video that you're able to see. If you're attending is a public access. But there will no, this is not a hearing, so there will be no public participation. And first I wanted to confirm by rule call that a quorum of the members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
So we have a quorum for members of the Planning Board are present. I'll also introduce the Planning Department staff who are with us. Director of Planning and Community Development, Lee Newman.
Here.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Clay.
Here.
And Clay Hutchinson, who is also within the Planning Department and is a Conservation Administrator and is helping us with our technical issues for all of our meetings. So I'm, I, I'm not aware that, that there was supporting, any supporting materials for this meeting sent out with the agenda. If there were, they are on our website. So the meeting is, is now open and the, the purpose of this meeting is to, to deal with any issues relating to the zoning articles that are on the warrant for the annual town meeting at 5:00 PM tonight. And the zoning articles are Article Five, which the Planning Board is the petitioner for, and Article Seven, which is a petition for by private parties. So with regard to Article Five, there have been four proposed amendments. All four of them at this stage have been reviewed by Town Council, have been reviewed by us. I mean, excuse me, the one, one we haven't really fully reviewed is the fourth one that came in from Town Meeting Member Stephen Fraal. So that's what we're going, we're going to do. But I just want to bring you up to date that, that the moderator has all four of these amendments. And what we're talking about with Mr. Fraal's amendment is what our recommendation is going to be. So I was speaking with the moderator after the special town meeting, just so I would understand how, how these amendments are going to be presented. And he said, um, he's going to call on the town meeting member who he has been told is the one who's going to make the motion to amend. And he's starting with the amendment that he received first. He's doing that in chronological order. So the first amendment that will be, he'll recognize Barry Pollak to make is the amendment that has to do with reducing the FAR and adding a new consideration in the special permit conditions. Then he'll turn to, and recently there seemed to have been a further change in who's going to make the motion. And now I understand it's to be Kathy Mertz, who is a brand new town meeting member and is the wife of Oscar Mertz, who's been active in equal justice Needham. And Kathy Mertz will be presenting the two articles that we're aware of, that that group is advocating for. The one that would remove the 240 unit cap and the other one that would change the, of, of the levels of affordability in multifamily housing. So those will come next. And then the last one will be Stephen Fraal's proposed amendment. So shall I move now to read? Or I don't know, I don't, I didn't really ask that it be put up on the screen, but it's not very long. I can read it.
Madam Chair, I thought that we did address this one at our last meeting before we talked, in one of our recent meetings in which, because we had two meetings that we were talking about different amendments. And this came in the second one.
Yes, we did.
And we took a formal position of opposing it. So I don't know that we need to.
That's what is missing unless I'm mistaken. And Lee, please tell me, or if I am, Paul, yes.
My recollection is that we voted to take no position because we didn't have time to consider it.
No, that was, that was the first meeting. And then we talked about it, I think, at, at the, at the second meeting. And now it's escaping me whether we formally voted it or not. So why don't we just clean up the record and if we haven't voted.
My, my memory is that this was really, this meeting, this was the only agenda item I was expecting because we did not take the final vote on whether we support this amendment or not.
Madam Chair, I move that the Planning Board take a position, if it has not already taken a position in a prior meeting, on Mr. Fraal's motion being the fourth motion to amend, as is currently stated, as we've all had it, we don't need to restate it now. So that's my motion.
So we have a motion. Do we, do we have a second?
Are you stating a position, Adam, or are you just asking us to take a position?
Right. I think you need to state the position.
Oh, well, I thought we would first move, I just wanted to, okay, fine. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, please restate it. I, I imagined you were saying in opposition.
I appreciate the, the opportunity to clarify. I move that the Planning Board oppose Mr. Fraal's motion being the fourth motion to amend Article Five at the annual town meeting. That's my.
I second that motion.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Alpert. And recognizing that we did discuss this at prior, at least one prior meeting, maybe two, and that we have seen the final version. I, 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 at the same time, I want to ask if there, if there is discussion of this motion. Yes, Mr. Black.
I just wanted to say during this opportunity that the reason why we're opposing the motion is not because we oppose increased environmental standards in town or energy efficiency standards in town, but because we don't believe that the floor of town meeting is the time to, doesn't give us an opportunity to properly study the impact of this and to, and to develop a policy for the whole of the town, which is something that we would like to do. And as our vice chair, I think, may speak to tonight on town floor, we encourage and are asking this individual and others to work with the Planning Board to subsequently establish perhaps greater standards of energy efficiency on development. So it's not that we oppose the, the outcome. We really oppose the process. And we, and we think that his, we laud the goal that he's trying to achieve and we wish to achieve it overall for the town as a whole.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Black. Um, yes, Paul Alpert.
Yeah, I had to put myself on mute because I needed to make a personal phone call. Adam, did you mention that I planned to say that?
I did. And I, and I said, and I, and I thought what, you know, your comments are eloquent. And I phrase them here.
Yeah.
And they're valid. And that's the only point of discussion, I believe.
Yeah, well, um, I do start my, assuming that Michael Fee recognizes me. I do start by saying that I'm speaking for myself and off of the Planning Board.
Although I, as far as I'm concerned, with respect to this particular motion, although you're speaking to all motions to amend as a total.
Yes.
I retract, I retract.
Yeah, yeah, I'm speaking to all motions to amend.
Okay.
Well, I see. You're speaking to all motions to amend.
Yes, I'm basically, I'm basically asking town meeting to reject all motions to amend and to vote either yes or no on the warrant article as presented by the Planning Board.
Okay, let me, let me also speak to this particular amendment. In connection with Article Twelve, which I was, that was on the special town meeting warrant to appropriate $60,000 for a planning consultant work over, of the next several years. I listed all of the studies that the Planning Department intends to undertake. And when I presented that to the Select Board, Marion, Select Board Member Marion Cooley said, and, and the planning office should also be studying sustainability. And although I didn't have that initially in my script, I certainly agreed with Select Board Member Cooley. And Lee Newman had said the same thing to me, that sustainability is something that the Planning Board, the Planning Department and the Planning Board will be studying in this year and the, in the, is a very important issue. So I want to put that out there and we expect that we will be doing that. Okay, and so is there a further discussion of Mr. Fraal's motion?
I, I guess my only question is in regard to Paul's point that he's going to be speaking in opposition to all amendments. Is there some reason why you shouldn't speak for the Planning Board? Should we take a vote authorizing you to go ahead and say, say, from the entire Planning Board? Or is that something that Jean, that Adam is?
Procedurally.
We should, we could do that right after this discussion, but go ahead, Paul.
Procedurally, the Planning Board has had its opportunity to present on YouTube. I don't know whether Michael Fee is going to ask the Planning Board for their position on, on, on the amendments. And if, if, if he does ask the Planning Board to do that and you'd like me to stand up and, and speak and make my prepared statement on that, on behalf of the Planning Board, might be happy to do that.
Why don't we take a vote on this motion and then I'll, I'll present a separate motion. All right.
All right, is the, Ben's, I, I, for the, for the sake of those members of the public who might be watching this meeting, I would simply like to read Mr. Fraal's motion. He would delete a sentence that says the proposed development should incorporate as many green building standards as practical, given the type of building and the proposed use, which is what we have now for Article Five to address green building standards. And he deleted that and his sentence would be, "The proposed development should be built to the most energy efficient building standards, e.g. stretch building codes approved by the State of Massachusetts at the time the special permit is requested, regardless of whether the town of Needham has adopted those standards for townwide use." So I just wanted to put those words out so the public knows what we're, what we're voting on. Any further discussion?
I just, I, I can't recall whether I brought this up the last time we talked about it because I had an opportunity to exchange some emails with Dave Roach. And what he has said is if they do amend, if the town meeting adopts his amendment, it's not going to make any, any difference. Because already this, the town adopted the stretch code in 2019. But having said that, Mr. Fraal's motion really goes a step further to say that if the stretch code is subsequently adjusted with higher standards, that the town, that the development is required to achieve those higher standards as opposed to perhaps a then lower standard that the town may have adopted.
I'd like to make one lawyerly correction. Mr. Fraal uses the word should, which is not shall, it's not must. And really what it means is the Planning Board should take a look at this and see whether as a condition of the issuance of a special permit, the higher standard should be applied. So it does, it does give flexibility to the Planning Board to apply this or not.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have the zoning up in front, Article Five up in front of me. Lee, I don't know if you, if you do. Was this, was this section referring to both special permit and by right? Or was this session, section only dealing with consideration for a special permit? And part of that consideration is any increased standards and energy efficiency?
It was dealing with special permits. It's Section 413 and it's special permit requirements.
And that's his and that's.
That, right, and that's what he's asking to change.
Okay.
Okay, but if it said shall or must, I think we'd have an even stronger objection to this under the circumstances, but it does give that flexibility.
So I don't, again, I had to make a personal phone call, so I didn't hear everything that Adam said about what, what I planned to say.
You didn't miss.
I have in my prepared, excuse me, Adam.
I said he didn't miss much.
Okay, but what I'm saying on both the Fraal amendment and the housing amendments is that.
We're not there yet, Paul.
What?
We're not there yet. We were just, I was just relaying a conversation by email.
But this relates to the Fraal, this relates to the Fraal.
Yes, continue.
That, that, these are matters that, that need further study and further vetting to have meetings and hearings before we adopt them. And, um, and, 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 and that's the major reason why we would, we asked town meeting, or I asked town meeting to vote no on the amendments. I also, in my statements, state that especially on the housing issues. Oh, yeah, but also on Fraal, that I am sympathetic. I am personally sympathetic to their positions. But, but I would like to have whatever amendments are made be applied, be applied townwide and not just to an individual parcel. And all that's in front of us tonight is an individual parcel.
My.
That's, and so that's, that's part of my reasoning on, on, on these amendments.
Right, so as far as Mr. Fraal's amendment goes, is there any further discussion? If not, a call for a vote? And of course, the motion was to, to recommend against adoption of this amendment. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the Chair is aye. So we have a unanimous vote of the four members here on, on that motion. So we wanted to further consider what Paul Alpert might say either spontaneously as he raises his hand or if requested by the moderator to speak for the, for the Planning Board on, on these motions to amend. So Paul, what, what, what do you say?
All right, I'm, I'm going to step away for a second because my, my statement, my printed statement is in my briefcase. I'm going to go get it.
Yes.
And I can, I, I don't think it's more than three or four minutes, so I'll be happy to read it to you.
Good.
All right.
Well, Paul is, is collecting it. Is it the ordinary practice of, of the moderator to, to call on the proponents as a matter of form to respond directly to motions to amend?
Yes, I think he, it's, it's a normal form for him to ask what the Planning Board's recommendation is on that motion to amend.
I just wasn't sure, Lee, that in this present circumstance where everything is on, on the website.
But our, our recommendation on the amendments is not.
It's not, that's right. So although we won't be making a, a pitch on Article Five, on the main motion, because that's on the website. Yes, we, we should be addressing our recommendation on each of these amendments. And I'm supposing actually that it would be done as each amendment is presented.
Yes, that's customarily how it's done.
Yeah, so we would respond to each as they're presented. So is it, Paul, now, Adam, you've been primarily responsible for Article Five. And do, is there one of, like, for example, Mr. Pollak's amendment that has to do with Flora area? Would you like to respond to that or do you want to leave it up to Paul to respond to all four?
I.
Let me read the statement and then.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, let me hear it. Let it serious.
Okay, so I'm going to read the whole thing as if I were making it not for the Planning Board. "Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am a member of the Planning Board, but I rise to speak on my personal view. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Planning Board. I'll take that out if I'm speaking for the Planning Board. I rise to speak against all amendments presented and ask town meeting members to vote for or against the articles as presented by the Planning Board. As mentioned by Mr. Block and Ms. Cooley in their outlined presentations, I'm, I'm sorry, in their online presentations, these articles were developed after many years of public meetings and hearings, the rejection of a prior iteration by town meeting by a favorable majority vote, but not by the required two-thirds vote, and careful consideration of the public input and adoption of many of the suggestions made by the public. These amendments are being presented at the 11th hour on town meeting floor without the ability to vet these amendments through the public meeting and public hearing process to fully examine the pros and cons of the proposals and fine tune them appropriately. I will now speak to each amendment individually. Eliminating the cap on the number of housing units means that we could have 350 or 400 units on this property that would have an effect on the schools and on infrastructure and on traffic, which has not been studied. When the Planning Board agreed to include housing as a permitted use on this site, we studied these issues to the extent that we were comfortable that at 240 units, the town could sustain the impact. Increasing the number of units would need to be further studied and vetted. Changing the affordable housing requirements to a higher percentage of units and changing the income requirements for affordable housing qualification is a change for which I am personally sympathetic. In fact, I and other members of the Planning Board have been looking at this issue independently of this warrant article. We have discovered that affordable housing required, requirements vary from zoning district to zoning district. My personal opinion is that affordable housing requirement should be uniform in all districts where housing is allowed. And I invite the proponents of this amendment to work with the Planning Board to develop an appropriate and fully vetted townwide affordable housing zoning provision. Similarly, with Mr. Fraal's proposed amendment. His proposal is something that I may be in personal agreement with, but we need the time in public meetings and hearings to fully consider it before making it a zoning bylaw. And I personally am amenable to considering it as a townwide provision. I invite Mr. Fraal to work with the Planning Board toward that end. Lastly, I ask town meeting to reject Mr. Pollak's amendment. The open space percentage in FAR allowable by special permit in the Planning Board's warrant article were the result of years of meetings and hearings resulting in the Planning Board hearing the public's comments and suggestions and increasing the open space requirement and reducing the allowable FAR by special permit. We also reduced the allowable FAR by right accordingly. The Planning Board has presented in this article a menu of allowable uses for this site. It is my personal opinion that reducing the allowable FAR to 1.0 will, as a practical matter, eliminate many of these permissible uses as no longer being economically viable. And please remember that the open space requirement is the floor and the 1.35 FAR is a maximum. And the Planning Board in considering an actual proposed project for this site in the special permitting process will be able to compel or at least negotiate more open space and a reduced FAR, especially in light of financial impact studies and traffic studies and infrastructure requirements that will be presented at that time, specific to the project proposed. In summary, I ask the town meeting to reject all amendments and vote on the warrant article as presented by the Planning Board. Of course, I would like your vote for the article as presented, but if you are opposed to the article as presented, please so vote without tinkering with a complicated zoning bylaw provision on town meeting floor without proper vetting and discussion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, if I may respond to just one part of the statement about the 11th hour. I think that may be perceived as argumentative and people will say, no, I brought that up at the hearing or something like that. I, I, I just leave out that word, you know, that statement about the 11th hour. But otherwise, I thought it was wonderful. So let me recognize everyone. Yes, Martin Jacobs, you wish to speak.
I had a question. You say if we lift the cap, the 240 cap, we might end up with 350 to 400 units.
Yeah.
Where did that number come from, 350 to 400?
I took the, I took the nine point nine plus acres of, of, of the Muzzy site, I'm not including the Channel Five site here, multiplied it by 43,560 square feet to get the number of square feet. And then took a 1.35 FAR to see what could be built out and divided that by about figuring about 1,200 square feet per unit.
Which is.
With something in that range.
And, and how many units are in the Kendrick?
More than 300.
390, I think, or something.
Yeah, might be something like that.
So that number you have is valid.
Okay, well, having read that, and I have no problem with what you read, Paul. I'm going to make a motion.
I guess I have a question. Should this be, should Paul, should, should these components that Paul's basically speaking about just be presented by Paul when each of the individual amendments comes up?
Well.
I was wondering.
Deal with that in the motion, okay?
I was, I was, I was picturing that Michael Fee would have all the amendments on the floor and then open discussion on the warrant article and all amendments. We don't usually discuss amendment by amendment on, on town meeting floor.
And Madam Chair, and Madam Chair, you said.
He told me that of course the law will be voted right at the end. You know, at the time, when the time comes to vote. But as far as discussion, I don't know if he'll recognize amendment, 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 and then have discussion. I just don't know.
I thought you said in your, in your note to us, Madam Chair, your note to me that the, the moderator intends to have the proponents in a chronological order present their motions to amend. That discussion on all motions to amend will occur concurrently. And then thereafter, at the end of the discussion, when question is called, it will then be voted on, as you said, in reverse chronological order.
Okay, you, you, you may be right, Lee. That is your memory about how it would be done. Is that correct?
Whether or not each one was discussed separately, whether they were all presented and then discussed as a collective or if they were individually discussed. But if what Adam is indicating is correct, and that was what your conversation with Michael Fee was, then I'm, that's, that's probably what the process is. And Paul's suggested strategy of addressing all the issues in one statement works.
Well, it does, given the way I'm going to make the motion, it doesn't matter. Here's my motion. I move that Paul and/or Adam in representing the board's, the board's position on the four amendments that have now been filed are authorized to present the board's opposition to the approval of all four amendments with the reasoning as provided in Paul's statement that has just been read to us. And whether or not the amendments. And whether or not the amendments are dealt with piecemeal. Or all at once, per the moderator, doesn't make any difference. But that, that position that Paul read is, shall be the position of the board as to one or all of the proposed amendments. Is that clear?
Yes, it is clear, and so we, we have that motion, is there a second? And then we can discuss each, each one and who's going to address it.
It's my statement, so I, so I was giving Adam the opportunity to second, but if he's not going to second, I will.
I, I was just, I was just thinking through, but we can have this part for discussion, so, second.
So it's. There's, there is a second, okay. Is there a further discussion on this motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I haven't resolved yet whether I want to address on behalf of the board. A response in opposition to Barry's comments beyond what Paul has stated. And I may want to isolate that, I haven't resolved that. What I would like to do is take the opportunity to share with you a couple of updates. One of which is it's possible Barry may further amend his motion. By increasing his special permit FAR from 1.0 to 1.2. That is a possibility. And yet, I now would also like to read to you a statement that he made at midnight on Facebook. Because it's revealing in his rationale, and I think that it should be a bit more specifically addressed. In response to this particular motion.
Can I just say, I, I'm perfectly happy to have you proceed, Adam, I just want to be clear that my motion as stated deals with the four. Motions to amend that have been presented to us, not something further that might come down the pike later.
Correct.
Okay, so if Barry Pollack comes up with something new, that's not dealt with by my motion.
Right.
That's, yeah, and, and, and of course, we'll continue this meeting till the. I always use the word adjournment, but it's really a different word when the meeting is over. You know, this meeting continues till the, till the annual town meeting is over.
So.
Okay, and, and so that, at that point, I know it's difficult. Should, what? Maybe, I don't know if we want to discuss it now or at the time, or after we take a vote on this. But I suppose if, if, if Adam is aware that this is a possibility, it might be a good idea to talk about it now.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Pollack posted at midnight last night.
Somewhere. And, and I, which I'm going to, which I'm going to read presently. Although Marty, I acknowledge that I think there's enough flexibility in your motion. That regardless of who and how, with respect to Barry's motion to amend can be accomplished regardless by your own motion. So Barry has, Barry has said, as many of you know, I plan to proceed tomorrow with a written motion to amend Article Five. The motion to amend has been approved as to form by the town moderator and town council. There are three basic parts of my motion to amend, which has resulted from Zoom meetings with town meeting members in many precincts. Participating in and watching videos of numerous planning board and joint town board and community meetings. Reviewing town board minutes, reviewing traffic study reports, speaking with town officials, making public records requests, discussions with Greater Boston YMCA officials. Developing a petition signed by more than 800 Needham residents, about 35% of whom reside in O2492, reflecting interested neighbors. All across our town and speaking with many constituents. Basically, I've tried to listen and then listened some more and filed objections with, and the petition with the planning board and finance committee. Which already resulted in certain changes to aesthetics such as increased setbacks and a decrease in certain height limits. Now, we want more changes to be the substance of Article Five to increase open space and decrease the traffic burdens. That an unchanged Article Five would create. As a result of this work, my motion to amend seeks the following three changes. One, increase open space from 25% in Article Five to 30% in my motion to amend. This change seems hardly controversial, although I do partly object to that. That's my own personal commentary, which I will address after I read this fully. Even the planning boards, even the planning board members juggle the numbers. 25 and 30 when responding to the petition that I worked on, which asked for 33% green space when objecting to their then 20% minimum. At community meetings, one of the most common issues raised was a desire for more open green space. There appears no meaningful downside to this requested change. Decrease floor area ratio from 1.35 to 1.0, which equates to a decrease from about 870,000 square feet, about 18 football fields. Of office space to about 640,000 square feet. One square foot of office space on one square foot of land is an FAR of 1.0. As multiple floors are used, open space can be created. While still keeping FAR the same, FAR is essentially a measure of density and correlates directly to traffic. As I expect to explain tomorrow, the report of a traffic engineer confirmed the traffic problems. That would be created at 1.35 with many resulting intersections reduced to grades of F. Which could be mitigated in certain locations only by property takings from our fellow Needham residents. Turning some, turning small lawns into new lanes. Based on reports from the town's retained traffic engineer. The reduction of FAR from 1.35 to 1.0 should decrease new traffic by approximately 40%. Three, affirm that the planning board should give favorable consideration to housing uses. That include an affordable component and to an athletic facility or skating rink, which are already permissible uses while emphasizing. Those uses should be favored when they provide substantial support for students or schools such as the Y does. This emphasis on school support is an effort to encourage housing and affordable housing. While also providing a way to support schools. Thereby taking on concerns that any additional housing means additional school needs. Mixed uses with a housing component will decrease the concentration of traffic during peak hours, during rush hours. The amount of opposition to the 1.35 FAR resulting traffic and potential property takings have been massive. Any concerns someone might have about disfavored uses such as a retail delivery station. Or more likely, a continued car dealership that might expand under present or future ownership. Can be taken care of by encouraging more positive development of mixed use, mixed uses. Without a massive office park that could so drastically change this side of Route 128 and cause so much friction and burdens for our neighbors. To be clear, I live about four tenths of a mile away from Muzzy. So my family will not look from our home directly at what goes in here, what, what goes in there, rather. We will, however, suffer the traffic that will, that would result from overdevelopment of an office park. But so will most of town. Please ask your town meeting members to vote no to Article Five unless it is amended to increase open space and to decrease FAR density and traffic. I look forward to an opportunity to present to town meeting tomorrow and answer any questions that other town meeting members might have.
Okay, well, Adam, none of that is really very new as compared with what we've seen before. Where is the indication that there may be a further amendment to boost, you know, to. Between the one and the 1.35, that he's likely to amend to 1.2.
Gene, he has not made that public yet.
So how did you hear about it?
A bird, a little birdie in a tree.
Little birdie told you, okay.
Just like camp. So, so I have, so I have a couple of specific comments about this. One is, he's effectively characterizing our discussion between what was 20% and up to his 33% of open space as trivial. And I object to that because. For, for a couple of reasons, one, it was not an easy move to go to 20 and to go to 25%. That in and of itself is actually a 20 or 25% increase of overall open space. That we had already by boosting the setback along Highland and Gould, which would be a green landscaped buffer from 20 feet to more than doubling it to 50 feet.
So, Adam, if I may, just please, because. The motion that was made by Martin Jacobs was that either Paul or you. Or was it broad enough, Marty, to include any member of the planning board or Paul?
You just spoke to Paul or Adam.
Paul or Adam, beautiful. Would state of the, that the planning board is opposed to all four of these motions. And we all, and I believe you referred to Paul's statement as.
Correct.
As, as expressing, adequately expressing that opposition. And I think after we. Vote on that, we can, we can talk, if we want to, we can talk about the. Possibility of an additional amendment regarding FAR and what our response would be to that if it were made. And, and we can also talk about whether Paul or Adam will be the one to respond.
So you want to take care of the motion now, and then after the motion's passed, we can discuss the.
Assuming we are generally satisfied, and, and, and I think it's understood. That the exact wording that Paul read to us of his statement would be naturally changed. Because he may end up, we don't know if he'll end up addressing all the amendments at once or one at a time. And let me, let me just mention what I, what I said. Summarizing my discussion with our moderator. He said, he will recognize members in the Chronicle, Chronicle Order that he received the signed motions. One will be Barry Pollack and then the, and in the housing, two housing motions, then Stephen Frasmisher. Then, this is what I wrote, discussion will continue until it's time to call for a vote on Article Five. Or someone who's a question, he will then call for separate votes. So it's true that what I wrote and I was trying to summarize our discussion. Would mean he'll take each motion, but then discussion will occur after each motion is presented. That, that I see was the expectation. So that Paul's narrative of responding to all four in one statement will likely work. But we naturally have to be flexible, and if that's not how things happen, then it would have to be one by one. So. Are we? And. I think even in the motion, it wasn't that we were going to go word for word with exactly what Paul said, right? We can, we can further discuss. Yeah.
Now, let me just say, if I'm speaking on behalf of the board. I will start by stating that the board has unanimously voted up in opposition to all of the amendments. Okay, and then I'll go into it. As in terms of your comment about the 11th hour. Let me read what I had and then read what I just changed the two.
Thank you.
So what I had was these amendments are being presented at the 11th hour on town meeting floor without the ability to. To vet these amendments through the public meeting and public hearing process. I have now changed that to, these amendments are being presented late in the process. Without the ability to properly vet these amendments through the public meeting and public hearing process.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I think that's fair, yeah.
My only, my only comment is, or question is, does that invite somebody to say, well, let's just go ahead and refer all of this. For further study, that's the one thing I don't want to do, I want this resolved tonight.
We can't stop that, Adam.
No.
I'm just going to make that motion, they're going to make that motion, no matter what the wording is that Paul delivers or you deliver. That may already be somebody's game plan, we'll just have to.
So then, Madam Chair, can we take it, can we move ahead with a vote and then we can talk further about responding to Barry's motion to amend?
Yes, all right then, if we're ready for the vote, I'll call for it. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so we have in place. The ability of Paul or Adam to respond either as, as each amendment comes up or all at once. At tonight's annual town meeting.
So if I may, Madam Chair, I, I, Paul, I think your response is. Is great in particular for the three. But I do. And I, and I will heed the, 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 you know, the full consent of the board, but I, I think that, or consensus of the board, rather. I do think that there are some distinctions here that I want, that I want to address. That in particular, the open space was not such, was not in itself. An easy thing to consider and that in fact, it could in itself. Be enough of a disincentive as a result of the 13 changes we've made in total since 2013, since 2019, rather. Which have been extensive to dissuade and to dissuade. Any development and therefore not improve the gateway at all. So there is a comment perhaps to be made in addressing that specifically. He's gonna, he's, he's revealed that he's going to speak to, to the traffic studies. Now, in my review of his statements on Facebook, he has grossly mischaracterized. He's taken a section of a discussion about traffic from November. Which had been further informed and evolved as naturally happens, you know, later on in the process. And he's, and he is effectively saying that, that. Takings are required on, on hunting. And that the traffic engineer said that that was the case, and in particular, that, that then. Select Board Member John Bullion suggested that that was also likely as well. However, that was John's personal opinion. And, and in fact, what the traffic engineer has said. Was that a long hunting on north, heading northbound approaching what would be Highland Avenue. There is enough capacity. On Hunting Road that does not require separating out a left turn, a straight and a right turn lane. In other words, there would be four, that the only reason a taking would be required. At Huntington or at Hunting would be to create four full lanes. An incoming southbound lane onto Hunting. And then one lane for each of the other movements northbound, making a left onto Highland. Proceeding north onto Gould and making a right onto Highland, so it's a total of four lanes.
So, Adam, yeah, I, so I guess what you're responding to is the issue of the. Reduction in the FAR, which Mr. Pollack links to the traffic impact. So, Mr. Albert, I, I, I recognize you to speak on this and try to resolve. What is going to be said as part of the presentation and who will say.
So Adam is responding to what Barry Pollack posted on Facebook last night. I don't, it, it, it sounds like what he plans to say on the floor of town meeting. But it remains to be seen whether he actually says it. And I'm going to give some town meeting members the benefit of the doubt that they feel like. that they feel like I do, that they don't want to go to Facebook and read what the crazies have to say, and so they may not have read that statement. So what I, you know, and and and, you know, Adam raises good rebuttals to what Barry is saying if he makes those statements on town meeting floor. So what I would like to do is read what I have. And I will, you know, if if the if if Michael Fee asks for the planning board to respond, I will start my opening paragraph by stating I'm a member of the planning board. And if I may say it, I I would like to say, and I am the presumptive incoming chair of the planning board.
Yes.
And
Quite presumptive.
Because we haven't taken a vote yet. And after we get finished and after we get finished tonight, you guys might get mad at me and decide not to vote me in.
All right, fair enough. Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Then I'll immediately say that the planning board has unanimously voted against all of these amendments. And then I'll go into my speech. At the end, if Barry Frail has made that statement as his remarks, I will ask the moderator if he would to recognize Adam Block to speak specifically to Mr. Freel's Pollack to speak to Mr. Pollack's amendment.
I was thinking exactly the same thing, Paul. What what you said, I think, is exactly and I do think Mr. Fee will allow you to turn over the, you know, and turn to Adam Block after you speak. I don't see why he would stop that from happening.
I have no problem with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Adam, just be very careful in the rules of civility as to how you word what Mr. Pollack has has said and done. I know it can be difficult.
Look, I'm gonna I'm gonna interrupt.
To be to to be diplomatic.
I'm interrupting here.
Yeah, and of course, mentioning people by name. You know, the passive tense like it has been said, that sort of thing, you know.
All I'm gonna say is that each of you are attorneys. I believe that I have separately provided each of you with consideration so that certain conversations that I may have had with each of you individually are solely as a result and protected under attorney-client privilege.
All right, that's a joke. Paul, could you could you do one more one more thing for me on the part about housing? About the cap on the number of units? Could you repeat what you said about that? I know it went to the three hundred fifty four hundred units, but what could you just repeat that, please?
Okay. Eliminating the cap on the number of housing units means that we could have three hundred and fifty or four hundred units on this property. That would have an effect on the schools and on infrastructure and on traffic, which has not been studied. When the planning board agreed to include housing as a permitted use on this site, we studied these issues to the extent that we were comfortable that at two hundred and forty units, the town could sustain the impact. Increasing the number of units would need to be further studied and vetted.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure, but I wonder if you might even insert the phrase our fiscal impact study. You know, because I I've been saying many times, the reason we oppose this is we had a very professionally done fiscal impact study and that's very important. And with no cap, there's no way to really judge the fiscal impact. Now, talking about three hundred and fifty and four hundred units introduces a possible way of studying fiscal impact, but we haven't done it.
Right.
So I just would like to use the phrase fiscal impact study somewhere in your comments.
Yeah, I'll try to put in the words fiscal fiscal impact study somewhere.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's personally, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary. I think the concept is covered off.
It is. You're right.
By saying that any specific project that comes as a result of what we're laying out will have a required fiscal impact study as well. So we understand that specific costs on municipal services.
Well, that's true, but but certainly the overall that we're asking town meeting to vote on tonight has been has been vetted in terms of a professional fiscal impact study.
And you're setting the outside limits in terms of what you're allowed to do, and this is.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. For the assertion of those words, I'd appreciate it. Now, we we're been meeting for an hour and I do want to make sure that we if are we are we finished with our discussion of the amendments? Certainly, we have taken a position on all four amendments now and and we have discussed our presentation at tonight's annual town meeting of our position on those amendments. Do we need any further discussion of that?
I hope. Go ahead, Adam. I have one more thing to raise.
I hadn't finished my rebuttal to to Barry's comment, you know, to Barry's motion to amend, but because and I do want to make a point that he says that that one three five FAR with many resulting intersections reduced to grades to F. But that's actually not true. That's a lie. In fact, the reality is mitigation would be required that would return it to either a pre-build or an improved condition. And in fact, there are most intersections are improved and including Hunting.
I I'm all in favor of saying that, but don't use the word lie, please.
I understand.
Okay. It's certainly inaccurate. You're right.
And then in terms of, I I don't think I'm going to speak to his third point because it's irrelevant, because it's not a requirement to have this be housing. And it's not a requirement to have this be a Y. It's just something that he would like to see.
But I think he did use, he did use a phrase that indicated he understood that it was to be encouraged, not required.
Which is why I'm saying it doesn't need to be addressed.
So here's my last point. I think we should at least give a brief consideration right now to what our position would be should there be a motion to refer. Possibility.
I recommend that we oppose that vehemently because it's just it amounts to nothing more than an abandonment of a concept. And yet this is going to continue to come up. And the opportunity is for the town to set the terms of development today as opposed to waiting for a developer who would then write the zoning themselves in their own interest as opposed to having studied this in the town's interest the way we have.
Well, please, other other members respond, Paul.
I would also throw in, as somewhat as stated in my statement, we've been examining this for years. We've gotten considerable public feedback and have made what is and have drafted what's in front of town meeting tonight after incorporating all those public hearings and public suggestions that we've gotten in the planning board requests that, you know, Adam, you know, the rest of it, you know, you can you can decide how to word it, but basically my thinking is the planning board wants to get this done tonight.
And I'd like I'd like to add that when it comes to the amendments having to do with affordable housing and sustainability, those are issues that we are going to study, but not for this particular site. We're going to study that townwide. And if we make a change to our special permit criteria, it will apply here as well as any any other zone that 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 we decided should apply to as we study it. So that's not a reason to refer. Yeah, and I think I think you you put it well, Paul, when it comes to Mr. Mr. Pollack's amendment. We are satisfied with what we're presenting to town meeting right now. We've studied it. We are satisfied with every part of it. And that's essentially what you're saying. Yeah.
So Adam, if there's a motion to refer, I'm suggesting that you be the one to respond.
Okay. And I'm going to oppose it.
Of course.
Of course.
That's what we're suggesting.
So should we have a motion and a vote to oppose any?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second that the planning board is in opposition to any motion to refer. But is there further discussion on that? Hearing none, I call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the chair is I. So that's our position. And as we said, Adam Block will be the one who will state that position if that if that motion is made. So do we want to talk about any further motion that might be made by Mr. Pollack to increase the FAR to one point two at this last, you know, extremely last minute?
I think my statement covers it.
Okay.
I think it does, too.
All right, so that motion is made separately so that you have to address it separately, it would sound to be the same response.
Yeah. But but as my motion didn't specifically cover any further motion, only the four that we know about, if we want to confer before taking a position, we could we could certainly ask that we have time to do that.
I think what we're what we're acknowledging here is that effectively any FAR adjustment below one point three five is something that we would oppose.
Right. Marty, are you gonna be there tonight?
I'm gonna be available. I'm gonna be watching. I'm available by phone.
Okay.
All right, so if such a motion is made, Paul, Adam and I will be there physically. The three of us, in fact, form a quorum. We will reach out to Martin Jacobs by phone and will confer about the that further amendment and make our response at that time.
I understand that Natasha is also going to be at town meeting, so.
Natasha will be at town meeting?
Right.
Oh, so she'll be sitting with us?
Be sitting with you, but I think she'll be kind of abstaining from this particular article, but she could be participating in the second article.
Yes, the Article Seven. Yeah, okay. All right, so so we there actually wasn't a motion. We just had a discussion. And if such an amendment is offered, we will respond, you know, we will confer at town meeting as this meeting continues. That that we're leaving it, right? Okay.
Yeah, but I believe I believe that we have a position that we're opposed to anything below one point three five.
Yes.
I think we do. I think we're all in agreement on that.
All right.
Can I speak to Article Seven?
Yes, that's what I want to move on to.
So Article Seven, just I guess for the record, is the citizen's petition to change the SRB versus SRA status from SR from SRA to SRB for a certain number of properties along Hunting up to and just past Kendrick on the side of the highway. A town meeting member.
Clay is prepared to put that up on the screen if that would help. Do you want him to do that?
I'd like to see it, please.
Yes. So Clay, if you would, put that area to be zoned up on our screen.
All right, just loading it up now.
Thank you, sir. So what I understand is that the top of this, the top of this image is the northbound section, is the northern section of Hunting. And then it continues south to Kendrick and you can see all these lots now.
It continues to Cheney Street.
Yes. Now, this this town meeting member raised a very interesting point that the whole framing for support of this citizen's petition was effectively to enable those homeowners to make some repairs and improvement to their house and perhaps to expand the size of of their house under less strict regulations with an SRB zone versus an SRA zone. When in fact, according to this town meeting member, that that's not the case. That we may have been hoodwinked. And that in reality, this is really sponsored by an existing property owner who immediately intends to develop multiple properties on the site on along this strip. My point is, I I I acknowledge that the attorney for in representing the the citizen made clear that it's possible that a couple of lots would be created as a result. I I am sympathetic to that town meeting member that this may not have been framed appropriately before us. I do, I I'm not surprised and would think that it's possible to get a couple of more lots on the northern section. I'm not sure. I don't think that it's possible to get them in the southern section because even under SRB rules, the lots are too, you know, the lots are really just too small to get much larger homes. And yet, this is really a money grab by one of the residents who also owns another property on that strip. And this is.
Yeah, you just explain to me where where north and south are that you're talking about.
Sure. So what I refer to as north, if you north of Kendrick. So if you're looking at the top of the screen, the first lot, which I I don't can't read. I don't think seventy-one, but I know it's not.
It's lot seventy-three, the pointed, the one that has a sharp comes to a sharp point.
So I think the citizen owns lot seventy-three, maybe seventy-two and would then intend to fairly soon demolish those properties and put up much larger homes. And and that same would be possible between lots seventy-one and maybe up to sixty-seven. I can't recall what the square footage is of lots sixty-six and sixty-five and south of that are.
Gotcha.
All right. If you let me follow on Adam Block's statement because I had a discussion with planning board member who encouraged me to watch I mean, excuse me, select board member who encouraged me to watch the select board's engagement with Attorney Jenta at the select board's recent meeting, out of which the select board voted to oppose this amendment. So I did watch it. And I also understand what Adam Block just presented. My understanding, and I also spoke with a town meeting member who called me this morning. But Adam, but what my understanding is that on the north on the northeast side, that's at the top of the screen, lots seventy-three, the pointed lot and the lot next to it, lot seventy-two are owned by petitioner, maybe not in his single ownership, but perhaps in a some kind of trust or LLC or I don't know, it's individually owned by petitioner Bruno De Fazio. And and in response to our questions, when we had our hearing about this proposed rezoning, I asked Attorney Jenta, what would be the likely number of new houses that would be built, you know, brand new because of lot division? And he said readily, there would be two new lots. And realizing now that his client, Mr. De Fazio, although there are many more petitioners than just Mr. De Fazio, almost all the lot owners are part of the petition. But Mr. De Fazio owns those two, seventy-two and seventy-three. So now I understand that Mr. Jenta's. So now I understand that Mr. Genta's response is saying readily there could be two new lots. He's referring to a re-division of lot seventy-two and the seventy-three. And then he said, and furthermore, uh through uh more complicated um. Um, s- slicing off of of sections of lots, you could get one more and that would be um also possible. Um, in response to it. So that's, that was my understanding. Um, in the back of my mind at the time was, well, of course, you know, if you took all the acreage. And just wiped out all the lot lines, you probably get even more lots than that. I mean, it was at the back of my mind, but I didn't expressly ask the question. The select board uh a a member did ask that question. And Mr. Jenta responded and he responded with respect to this northerly strip. Uh, not the area between Kendrick and Cheney, but the area, um, you know, between uh Kendrick and the highway, you know, that comes to a point. He said, if you actually bought up the entire area and then re-divided it. You could have a total of eight additional houses. Okay. So he was forthright on that, of course, and I didn't, we didn't ask the question. I'm not saying he wasn't forthright with us, no, by any means. So the select board, understanding that there could be a total of eight more housing units. Um, voted against it. And so I wanted to bring it back to our board.
The matter is, the select board did, not the planning board.
Oh, I keep saying the planning board. I'm sorry, the select board. Um, so I I wanted to bring this back to our board. In case with that information, you wish to um. Uh, cha- we wish to change our recommendation on article seven. Um, my presentation of the planning board's recommendation is on the town's website. So I would feel it necessary to ask to be recognized in order to, you know, speak to that at um that at the here at the um annual town meeting tonight. Uh, I'm not personally saying I would vote to change our recommendation. I really, in my mind, knew that could happen. Um, but I want to make sure everybody understands that. And that we discuss that. Mr. Albert.
Thank you. So I got a call from a select board member, probably the same select board member who spoke to Jane. And the select board member was adamant. About how um we're all being hoodwinked. He didn't use that word. Select board member didn't use that word. Uh, so I just gave away that it wasn't Mary Ann Cooley. Um, and um. Uh, I was told that the real objective was to get up to three or four new lots. I also got a call from a private citizen um who was concerned about the same issue. My response to both was, I've got no problem with that. What's wrong with somebody being able to add three or four new lots? To our housing stock in Needham? I, you know, why, why, why should we oppose that? Are we opposed to new development in town? I didn't use those words. I didn't say that. But I indicated that I've got no problem with their redeveloping and adding three or four new lots. Now, if they can buy up all of these lots and re-subdivide and get eight new lots out of this. How many houses are we talking about? Now, we're saying that we already own two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten houses. They'd have to buy, buy out ten private houses. That's probably
Uh, I'm, let me just Let me just interrupt to to clarify. Mr. Jones just sp- spoke of that strip as having twelve you lots now.
Right, but I'm saying that two of them are already owned by somebody who wants to
Oh, I see.
Okay, so if we're talking about that person, he'd have to buy, he 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 would have to buy eight or ten houses. Probably at seven, eight hundred thousand dollars a lot. Maybe a million dollars a lot because people could hold them up on this. That's a lot of money. You know, is that really going to happen? And again, if somebody were able to do that and to subdivide this and get eight new lots, my question is, again, what's wrong with that? Why would we be opposed to that? People buy up land and subdivide and build houses all over town. And we're only talking about at at most fewer than ten lots. So I've got no problem. Now granted, maybe, maybe the petitioners were not forthcoming with us as to their real motives. But you know, still, i- it's, that's no reason to reject it. I would not be adverse to changing our um vote. From from support to no opinion, but I I'm comfortable supporting it. I did, you know, this. The, these are all lots. These are all lots that are that are pre-existing, non-conforming. None of them meet the requirements of residential A zoning. And so I've got no problem redesignating pre-existing lots, none of which comply with 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 residential A. We only have three choices in town, residential A, residential B, and general residence. I don't think they want us to go to general residence here. So, you know, I I'm, but but for that reason, I've got no problem with this. And by the way, we've done this before, even even in the past five years that I've been on the board. We changed from residence A to residence B, the area along Central Avenue near Dwight Street. In order that lots could be subdivided and new houses built.
Yes. Mr. Jacobs, yes.
Yeah, let me just say, I I think what we're seeing here is really the same thing we saw with the Hartney-Grahamonts site. Where there were a lot of people who were upset that a change in zoning might lead to somebody making some money. It's the same thing we're seeing at the Muzzy site, where people are concerned that a change in zone is going to lead to somebody making some money. It's exactly what they're concerned about here. It's the same same issue, really, in different scenarios, but the same issue. And my feeling is the same as Paul's. That's not a sufficient reason for us to say no to this.
And uh because I watched the um presentation um and discussion of the select board. I want to add another reason the select board is uh opposed to this, just so we we hear it. Um, you know, secondhand from me. Um, it it referred back, the spokesperson for the select board, I think, was Mr. Matthews. He he referred back to the Moderna project and the concern about the health impact of um. Fumes from the highway on residents and said that this is not a location where new residences should be encouraged. Or, you know, zoning change to allow uh because of that same concern. Um, so uh I I just just did want to put that that forward. So we understand fully uh the select board's opposition.
Can we take down the um uh the screen share now, please?
Uh, oh, yes, uh, Clay, if you would, yes. And uh, Paul, uh,
Yeah.
I recognize you, Adam, but Paul, I believe.
And I had a response to that because that was raised to me also, and I had a response to that. There are houses right now that abut the highway. Um, I for I I forget why I was there, but I was on um uh Reservoir. Street at one time, looking, looking at uh what was what was along there. And as you go farther down Reservoir Street from Central Avenue, there are houses where their backyards go go right up to the highway. Uh, people, people live abutting the highway in this town. And, you know.
And others.
And, you know, it's, I'm showing my libertarian streak to some extent here. You know, we live in a capitalist society. If you can build a house. Along the highway and somebody is willing to buy it. Why should we be preventing that from happening? People would be buying with full knowledge of what they're buying. It also creates a house that would be affordable because of the highway situation. We we have an affordability problem in this town. So, you know, you could, you could build a house that because it's along the highway would sell for like five or six hundred thousand dollars instead of. Instead of being eight or nine hundred thousand dollars if it were elsewhere in town and somebody who can't afford eight or nine hundred thousand dollars to move into Needham is able to buy this house and live in it.
Agreed.
I've got no problem with that.
Yes, let me recognize um Mr. Block to speak now.
Thank you. So I um I'm thinking about a couple of things. One, I don't disagree with what any of you have said. I wanted to raise it just because I don't like the idea of. Uh, you know, people presenting to us and gaining our support under false pretenses. That was my only comment. And I'm also looking at the time. It's one thirty. We have to be at town meeting, you know, probably in about three hours. And I have to excuse myself at this point.
Okay, so we should be able to adjourn. I'm just going to say that we have had a town meeting member. And a member of the select board advised us that that um uh we were presented with something under false pretenses. That's, that's not enough for me to conclude that we were presented with something under false pretenses. Those are alligator, those are unsubstantiated allegations for me.
That's a valid.
Furthermore, um, I don't think anything that was presented to us as a planning board was falsely presented. I think what's being referred to is a letter to town meeting members signed by Mr. De Fazio. Where he emphasizes the difficulty of people putting on porches and making small adjustments to their house. And nowhere in that letter does he address the prospect of reconstruction. And I think it is that letter that is being objected to.
On that basis, may I move to adjourn? Or no, can I move to continue the hearing?
Oh, yes, yes, we, thank you.
Before you all disappear, because I'm going to be at town meeting today, I'll be there at around four thirty. Um, can someone tell me what the where where the best location is to park? I haven't gone to.
If you're, if you arrive at that time, you should be able to get a street parking spot on Highland.
Okay.
I was, I I was able to park very easily in the lot for um Rosemary. Which is just across the railroad tracks on Up the the, you know, the parking lot for for the pool.
Okay, thank you.
It's possible that the library is is uh accessible. Um, oh God, Adam, Adam left, but we still have a quorum. Um, we need to amend Adam's motion to provide that this meeting will adjourn uh upon adjournment of the annual town meeting.
Yes, I I I was thinking that we need to do that. Um, this meeting will adjourn at the adjournment. He, his motion was that we continue.
Correct.
So this meeting stays open until we uh until the um adjournment of the annual town meeting.
Okay, and I started a um um a text uh email with everybody um first um for what what's for Saturday. So I'm assuming that that's still active for everybody and I won't need to send out a new um text.
On Saturday.
Well, for the last town meeting, um, I said, I created a a group conversation so we could talk
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody still has that, so we'll just work off of that.
Fine. Yeah.
Uh, excuse me, um, I was distracted, Lee. What what we, what were you saying? Uh?
On Saturday, I started a group conversation through text with everybody's phone number in it so we could communicate in case
Yes, yes.
I just want to make sure that you still have it and I don't need to send out a new one. I'll add Natasha.
Yes.
Please record my vote in favor. I have to leave too.
All right. We, right, we call for a vote. Mr. Jacob.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And the chair is I. So uh we um, we have the vote that adjournment will be at the end of the annual town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.